Welcome everybody to the Cape Elizabeth School Board Meeting Tuesday, February 11, 2020. If we could all stand to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Can I please have a motion for item two?
I approve board minutes. Voice of Congress, now where we are.
Yes.
Board minutes for January 14, 2020.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay. Do we have adjustments to the agenda tonight? Oh, I missed that. I saw that as a pledge of allegiance. Thank you, dear. So we're going to backtrack and go to adjustments to the agenda. I skipped an item already. Yes.
I have two adjustments. 7D should, the administrative contract should be 2020 to 2023. So we need to make that adjustment. And then in 7, at 7B, and then in 7D, we need to remove the field trip because it already happened. Oops.
All right. Are there any other adjustments to the agenda? Okay. And then 7B, you cut out.
I heard D.
7B.
This end of the table was confused.
Oh, sorry.
Okay.
7B and 7D.
So that should be 20 to 23.
Yes.
Yep, that's correct.
Okay. Next is comments by student representatives.
Hello. Things in my high school are going really well. And this upcoming Friday, we have our Safe Day, which is the Sexual Harassment and Assault Awareness Day for juniors and seniors, which I know a lot of people are really excited about. And so how it's going to work is there's going to be multiple breakout sessions. So students will be going to different talks and activities and stuff like that, all to gain awareness around the subject. One of them is sexual, is, we have one about helping a friend and another one about self-defense and activities like that, which students are really excited about. And for the sophomores, they will be doing a job shadow day. And for freshmen, they will be doing community service within the town, which is super exciting. And also juniors have begun starting their SAT prep in school, which I know last year got really positive feedback, because I know a lot of times, students sometimes can feel a little bit unprepared for the SATs, especially if you have to study for it at home, like by yourself. Having that self-discipline, I know for some students can be really hard. And so having it built into their schedule, I know, just really helps prepare kids over from now until April, which is super beneficial for them, in working on Khan Academy and with Mr. Wagner and the A.C. So that's what's going on in the high school right now. So all good things. Yes.
Great. Thank you so much. And we have a few presentations. Oh, sorry. Comments from public on the agenda. Okay, seeing that there's none, now we have a presentation. If Mr. Shad would like to come up.
Representative Carney's here.
And Representative Carney. Would you like to step up as well? Here is the.
Oh, and Senator Mallett.
And Senator Mallett. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm here, I was asked to say a few words about Sarah Beckel, who's the Coach of the Year. We're very proud of her and very proud of her work with the volleyball team. I will say that in the years since Sarah has taken over the volleyball team for Cape Elizabeth High School, it is such a cool atmosphere in the gymnasium. They draw lots of fans because they do really well. They have huge numbers of boys and girls who come to support them, and parents and grandparents and everything else. It's a, if you haven't seen a volleyball game, because I really had not seen an organized volleyball game before I started going to the games here, they are so cool. I mean, and rarely does anybody get hurt, and so that's really cool. They cooperate with one another pretty well. We've been super competitive. We won the state championship. I think we, I didn't look up the stats. We've won it maybe twice under Sarah's leadership, and we've been in the state finals in most, if not all, the years when we haven't won the championship. Sarah's an absolute joy. One of the things that is, I don't know how she does this, but she knows volleyball. She was a Division One volleyball player in her college. She's in the Hall of Fame in her college. So she knows the game inside and out. And you've got to see these games, because they line up in these bizarre ways, and I have no idea what they're doing, and yet the players know what they're doing. And they coordinate so beautifully. They work their tails off, they throw their bodies around, and then whether they win or lose the point, and this to me is a huge testament to the coach, whether they win or lose the point, they get up, they give everyone another high five, they shake hands. So they work really hard. They are in really good shape. They are so athletic, so skillful, and that is really a tribute to Sarah's leadership. And let me see if there's any, so, and if you haven't yet seen a Cape Elizabeth High School volleyball game in the gym, it's really cool, because the players are right there, the fans are right there, it's packed. And just thank you so much, Sarah, for just bringing some wonderful leadership and coaching. There is this one position that before I retire, I'm going to learn the name of it, but it's the one that wears the other, the funny clothes. And that's the one who just throws themselves all over the place. And it is absolutely amazing. So I'm here to say congratulations on my behalf for being named the Coach of the Year, Sarah Beckel.
All right. Thank you so much. That's, it was quite an honor and quite a surprise to be nominated for, awarded Coach of the Year. It's voted on by your peers, and that's a really huge compliment to me. But you can't be Coach of the Year unless you've got an incredible group of girls that come in every single day and buy into the system, and even if they think I'm crazy, they'll try it, and it turns out being crazy sometimes works. And I'm lucky to have two of my athletes here with me. And I wouldn't be here without my team. We would not be successful. It's hard to graduate, 2016, no, 1918, I don't know what year we're in, but the year before, we graduated 12 seniors, and to come back the following year and make it to the States with a brand-new team is impressive, and it has everything to do with them and the hard work they put in on and off the court, and I am purely blessed, and it's an honor to be able to coach that team. So thank you so much.
Sarah Beckel. Thank you for allowing us to include this in your agenda this evening. So I'm Ann Carney. I'm representative for House District 30, which is most of Cape Elizabeth. Do you want to introduce yourself?
Rebecca Mallett, I represent all of South Portland, Cape Elizabeth, and Hogs, Scarborough.
And we had requested a legislative sentiment to acknowledge the fine achievement of Coach Beckel. This is an official legislative act where we acknowledge fine achievements in athletics like yours. And so what I'll do is I'll read the text of it and then present the award. State of Maine, be it known to all that we, the members of the Senate and the House of Representatives, join in recognizing Sarah Beckel of South Portland, Coach of the Cape Elizabeth High School volleyball team, who has been named Volleyball Coach of the Year by the Portland Press Herald. We extend our congratulations and best wishes. And be it ordered that this official expression of sentiment be sent forth with on behalf of the 129th Legislature and the people of the state of Maine. Congratulations.
Well, that is really great news. Thank you so much for all you do. Next up is the principals' updates. I'll let you guys figure out. Oh, sorry. Gosh, I am not with it tonight. The Cape Elizabeth Language Department, State of the State, there's a presentation happening. Would you like to come up to the podium?
So I was just elected the spokesperson to start off, so I guess I'll call for, I'm Susan Dana. I teach Spanish at Cape Elizabeth Middle School. And I guess first of all, to start with an introduction of the World Language Department, actually Poncove through high school. But just to back up, we just wanted to, I think the last time we addressed the board was 2010, so we decided it's about time. Tenured there are many new board members, administrators, so just to kind of give you an update on where we are in the World Language Department. It's a very important department in our, in our school district, so we just want to give you an update. So first of all, we'll start out with maybe Poncove is Marcia Chase and Katrina Aspenwall. We'll teach it at Poncove. And then in the middle school, we have Laura Tripp, Lisa Leonard, Anne Marie Dion, and also Katrina Aspenwall. She's at both Poncove and the middle school. And then in the high school, we have Monse Torres, si, Monsera Torres, no, and then David Peary and Ali Guither. And Sonia Medina in the back, sorry, Sonia Medina. So I think we're very fortunate in Cape Elizabeth that we've been supported by the community and the school board. We have really a very large department, and we really appreciate your support. Anyway, I'm just going to talk a little about the middle school. We're going to try to do just five minutes each. We realize your time is precious. You do have a presentation document, and we can share any of this as well. So at the middle school, we, we have classes in fifth, just, I'm just kind of, so what I'm going to be doing just for the quickly middle school, the class frequency, some of the methods we use, global connections, a little bit of global competency. I realize that's a new goal, which is great in the school board, so maybe talk a little about what we're doing now to reach out globally. But so the classes in fifth and sixth grade, so Poncove's five, six, seven, eight, or middle school's five, six, seven, eight, so in fifth and sixth grade, classes meet every other day for 45 minutes. And then in seventh and eighth grade, students meet every day, the world language students. Class periods are 48 minutes, so it's every day, 48 minutes, the same as science, math, language arts, science. So again, we feel very supported with the amount of time that we're given with the students. Some of the methods that have changed, I think, since we were last here, is we're doing more and more proficiency. You probably hear about that from the high school and from Poncove as well. And comprehensible input, where we're just, we do a lot with storytelling, a lot with listening comprehension, the middle school level, and just trying to get the students to understand the language first, the way a baby would learning the language, and then move our way up to speaking. So like I said, I just want to talk a little bit about global competency. It's one thing in the packet there, but, and I'm going to go through this very quickly because I'm going to try to keep this to, but I just had a meeting earlier with Donna and asking her that the board's been kind of struggling with how do you define global competency? And I said, it's not just the Cape Elizabeth School Board, but it's around the country right now. It's one of the standards of ACTFOL, which is the American Council of Teachers of Foreign Languages. So I just went quickly to their website right after our meeting, and I'm not going to read through this, but this is just what they say global competency is. You can go to ITSI, which is the International Society for Tech and Education. That I like, it's just kind of a bullet. I learn from people of other cultures. I collaborate with others using digital tools. I can work towards common goals. I explore local and global issues. Now, that's from the tech side, but at least that gives you something. But I think the best thing, I think sometimes as adults, we go through a comment, what's global collaboration, global competency? This is what my sixth grader said. Now, this is from last year, but I just pulled up the, I did a Google form with them. So to see what other schools and people do, and so they can maybe bring that idea or tradition to your city, country, or state, this is verbatim from the students. So people can learn about how other kids around the world live and speak. It's important to have kids learn about the world and languages around us. Global collaboration is important for students because they need to see and learn about other traditions around the world. It's fun and interesting. And we could go, I don't want to spend too much time, we could go for hours and hours on this, but I just wanted to point that out. But some of the programs that we've been doing in the middle school, Worldwide Schools is a free program through the Peace Corps, and you can be partnered, any teacher can sign up, you can be partner with a Peace Corps volunteer. Last year was partnered with Emma Inhorn, and if you know, she's a Cape grad, I think 2014, 15, I'm not sure. But she was, after she went to, she went to college for four years, and then she was in Panama, so we were fortunate enough to be partnered with her. So last year, the sixth graders had raised money, and we purchased books. They started the very first library. This is a town of 150 people in Panama, and it was just really, really exciting. And Emma just came back in December, just last month, or a month and a half ago, to talk about this project. So this is where they built their library. These are the moose, all my students made a moose to send down, so that's how they decorated the library. So everyone was very excited to see, oh, there's my moose. And those are the books, and they purchased 200 books. Each student picked out a title with the money that they earned. And it just, it looks very simple here, but we spent a full year on that. They started geography and Spanish terms, and we incorporated a lot with the language and the culture of Panama. Global Collaboration Week, we've participated for the last five years. It's, we've been both a project leader and a participating class. We hosted it just last fall, Back to School Traditions Around the World. And the way it works is anyone around the world during that week can log on to whatever activity you're sponsoring. And it was kind of fun, because we'd responses from Egypt and from India and Oklahoma, and it's just another easy, it's free, another free program, but a way to get students thinking beyond 04107. Global Goals, I presented this to the board last year, so I'm going to kind of zip through this, but the United Nations has a huge initiative for Global Goals. And then Journey North is another program. It's $15 a class, which is actually a really good deal. But all our fifth graders are participating this year, and they make symbolic butterflies to send down to Mexico, near the reserves where the monarch butterflies go. And these are students, just some of the pictures, the butterflies that they made, they each made a little one. We just found out this week that our Cape Elizabeth butterflies have landed in Mexico, so this is going to be the lesson for the next couple of weeks. And there's actually our butterflies. The students haven't seen this yet, so it's going to be part of their scavenger hunt, because they have to go through all the images and find their butterflies. But the Placera Project, where a trip just started this year, was a really successful project, where students sell handmade bracelets from Central America. And actually, they just got this about three days ago. I guess we did such a good job that they actually made maracas specifically for Cape Elizabeth, hand carved. We just made bookmarks, I don't know if you've seen the Thomas Memorial Library, just more outreach. It's local, but they're still using French and Spanish, so bookmarks, oh, to help Thomas Memorial celebrate its 100th birthday. So I'm just going to stop there. I think I'm beyond five minutes, but, so I've got more. But, so this is really quick. But it's very exciting what we're doing in the classroom, and again, we really appreciate your, your support.
Thank you.
So I guess next is probably Poncove. Are we going to go through the sequence? Well, middle school's out of order, but yeah.
I'm Marcia Chase, and I teach French and Spanish in grades one through four at Poncove Elementary School. I'd like to begin just really by giving you a brief overview of our history. Students begin their study of language in our district in first grade, and then in alternating years, students begin language instruction in either French or Spanish. Students stay with the same language through sixth grade, and then in seventh grade, they can choose to remain with that language through high school, or choose the language they haven't been studying for those prior years. I'd like to talk a little bit about the Poncove schedule at present for World Language. We are structured to have two meeting times, two class contact times, over the course of six school days. And this averages out to five classes a month. Class lengths have varied over the years, anywhere from 30 minutes in grades two through four to 20 minutes in grade one. And this year, we're very fortunate, because we've been given a little extra time, so we have one in the two, in the six-day rotation. We have one 30-minute class and then one 45-minute class, which is more than we've had in the past. Just as a point of comparison, the ACTFOL, which is the American Council of Teachers on Foreign Language, their recommendation is that for minimum basic second language proficiency at the elementary level, that students have to have regular contact time of 60 minutes, three times in a five-day period. So another, another thing I'd like to talk about that's been very positive is that in 2017, we got a classroom for the very first time in our history. So prior to this, we had been itinerant teachers. We had always carried all of our materials with us, and we went to as many as 48 classrooms in a six-day period, not 48 classrooms, but 48 class sessions throughout the school over that six-day period, which was, was a challenge. So we're very thankful that we have, our program's really been enriched as far as the authenticity of the language environment we can offer by having a regular classroom. And that, so that was, that was just in 2017. We, the original proposal for our World Language program back in 1988 was to have a key through four program, because research, of course, shows that the earlier language begins, the better, the greater the benefits. The compromise was to start a program in fourth grade and to then to lower the, the age at which language was begun over the years. So third-grade language classes were added in 2000. Second grade was added in 2013, and then first grade was added in 2014. You have on pages four and five of the document we gave you, that's the overview of grades one through four. And I'm going to, I'm going to skip over some of the information there, but primarily our second language goals in grades one through four are that students begin to develop French and Spanish skills, they begin to develop them. And our goal is really to allow for greater facility in world language in grades five through eight. So we sort of set a foundation for accelerated learning as they get to the middle school. Our curriculum emphasizes listening comprehension, speaking skills, and emerging literacy awareness, and to promote a positive attitude towards other cultures and other languages. Our targets are really to develop skills in communication, culture, vocabulary, and connections. And there's a lot more that we do, but I just really wanted to give an overview and a background. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, good evening, and my name is Ali Guither, and I teach, do I need this? I don't think I need this. And I teach Spanish at the high school. Thank you again for giving us the opportunity to share what's going on at the high school with you this evening. We currently offer 16 different courses, nine in Spanish and seven in French. This six, these 16 courses service 447 high school kids out of an enrollment right now of 529. Out of those 447 kids, 86 are seniors in a graduating class of 122. 95% of those 86 seniors are enrolled in levels four through six, Spanish or French, which means that they have taken four years of language at the high school. Our goal. One area we have identified a need is an introductory French level. We've not been able to offer a French one level since 2011, which has resulted in A, students be put in Spanish one, when they've been studying French this whole time, and B, students being pushed into Level Two when they needed a foundations course to help them fill those gaps. Many of those students that were pushed into Level Two dropped out of French after a few years. Our goal is that our kids take four years of language at the high school. Had these students had a foundations course, they would have been more successful and more likely to have finished a four-year program. As a final point, we would like to share with you some results of a pilot assessment program that we have had this year at the high school. This year, seniors and juniors in Level Five and Six, both French and Spanish, took the ACTFOL Assessment of Performance Towards Proficiency in Language, Apple for short, this past December. 61 of the 89 students met the State of Maine's standards to qualify for the Seal of Biliteracy, with another 23 that need to take, retake one section at the beginning of March to be able to qualify for that seal. The seal is affixed to their diploma, and it is also noted on their transcript and recognized by academic institutions and the business community. We are very pleased with these results. Thank you, Kathy, for bringing it towards us, our attention. As a side note, last year, the State of Maine granted 183 seals of biliteracy in the whole state, and we already have a third of them. So I'd like to conclude by thanking you again for giving us this opportunity to keep you up to date with what's going on in the Foreign Language Department in this district. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for that. It sounds like a very strong program, and it was nice to sit in on one of your classes this past week, taking a little test about familia. Okay. We have next up is a presentation on esports introduction.
Jason Lund.
Yes, thank you, Jason.
Switch cables real quick. While I set up here, a quick introduction. My name is Jason Lund. I work for the Technology Department here in Cape Elizabeth. We'll see if it comes up. Do a quick change. So just an introduction, as I set this up. My boss here, Noel Haraf, and I attended a presentation on esports last spring at a conference, and one of the sessions was on esports. And I took one in the morning, and I immediately left there, and I went to go track him down, and I asked him to please attend to the afternoon, or please attend the afternoon one. And when he came out, I asked him the question, so how long is it going to take for esports to be at Cape Elizabeth? And he said, after that, next fall if I can do it. So here I am, ready to go. Esports, what is esports? Esports is competitive video gaming. A lot of people, when they first hear the term esports, this is kind of the visuals that A lot of people, when they first hear the term esports, this is kind of the visuals that they usually see. A bunch of kids playing video games, maybe playing in their garage, so on and so forth. Usually individually, you know, it's not that much of a sport, is it? Let me show you what I think of when I hear esports. This is a quick video clip that I'm going to show, and I'm just going to show a little bit of it. But this is the League of Legends Worlds 2019 in Europe. There are twelve regional leagues. North America is the LCS. And this is what happens there. As you can see, it is not a small production by any means. And I want to jump to a little head here. This is the arena in Paris, France where the finals was held. It was the Accor Hotel Arena, which seats twenty thousand one hundred people, and it was sold out. And the biggest statistic I just want to show you here is this one right coming up. Now, this is live broadcast. This is peak stuff. So I'm going to use a statistic that kind of doesn't correlate with it, but I just want you to put this into perspective. The most-watched sport in the world is football. That's soccer for us. Two billion people watch the World Cup. In the United States, number one sport, and of course, is football. The 2018 Super Bowl was watched by a hundred and one million people. The second sport in the United States is baseball. The most-watched World Series of baseball was in 1978, and it was watched by forty-four point two million people. The 2019 World Series was watched by thirteen point nine million people. These are world statistics. So this isn't a small sport at all. This is a worldwide growing sport. And of course, with growing sports, there's always corporations. A lot of companies are starting to get involved with esports, a lot of investments. Twitch, of course, with their streaming along with Mixer, YouTube, Facebook, Esports Arena, and other arenas being built around the world. We might recognize the Kraft Group. We all probably recognize it. Some of us may love them or hate them, depending. But I just want to kind of bring them up. They actually own quite a lot of different sports. You, of course, see the Patriots up there. But I don't know if you also know that they own an esport called the Boston Uprising, which plays in the Overwatch League. They also own the New England Revolution, which is a soccer team. That soccer team plays in the Major League Soccer. And one of the requirements to be in the league is actually to have an esports player for the FIFA EMLS Cup that eventually plays on the World Cup. So this Kraft Group that you know and love from Patriots actually owns just as many esports teams as they do regular teams. And of course, after big corporations start getting involved, so do colleges. The history of college and esports is... Quickly run through real quick. The big parts are, in 2016, Robert Morris University in Chicago was the first school to offer scholarships to students for esports. In their first season, they actually had one of their players poached by a pro team. The University of Utah followed suit, being the first school in the Power Five Conference to have esports. The University of California, Irvine, upped the ante by building a community esports arena on their campus. Robert Morris followed them. Curriculum has been developed by the university in Nevada, Las Vegas, UCI, and Miami University for esports programs. In late 2016, early 2017, saw the development of official organizations being formed. At the time, NCAA kind of went meh and was kind of not interested. So it was actually, what was formed was the National Association of Collegiate Esports, the NACE, which then in 2018 led to, with those governing bodies, they saw the growth of school participation triple within one year. Speaking of UCI, this is their community lab that anybody who goes to UCI can come and use these esports computers. In the State of Maine, we actually have four colleges that participate either in the NACE leagues or a similar league to it. Two of these colleges are now also offering esports management programs. And I expect further colleges to come down. Speaking of which, the NCAA is now very interested in esports and trying to start up a program. What these colleges see and what schools are starting to see is it's also not only just the players that are involved, it's the entire production. As you saw in that video, you saw a lot going on. So you not only see coaches, you see announcers and talent. You see the entire video production of it. You see media specialists. This is a sport that grew up with media, built right into its DNA. And a lot of pro teams are looking at, okay, these are how pro teams act. They hire researchers and analysts and health and fitness and so on and so forth. So when you see these programs, they're also expanding these programs where some colleges are also going, "Oh, hey, we used to be a sportscaster program for regular sports. Why are we also not doing it for esports?" So it's not only just the playing. It's the entire production that is also opens up students to new fields. And speaking of students, esports fits right in with the four Cs, the critical thinking, creativity, collaboration, and communication. But it's not also, when I say students, a lot of people look right at esports and say, "Oh, boys." But quite honestly, if I asked the student population here in the high school, "How many of you are football players?" Probably get the football team. But if I asked them, "How many of you are video gamers?", I'd probably get a large percentage. And based on statistics, when I look at that large percentage, I know that esports will be, as far as when I'm here, and should be, a co-curricular program or a co-ed program. As far as participation, there are five major leagues right now. HSL is probably the biggest league going on, but Play Versus is the new up-and-comer. A lot of leagues like the HSL have gone straight to the schools and said, "Okay, please participate in our leagues", and went at schools in that direction. Play Versus has decided to go in an opposite direction. And Play Versus specifically decided, instead of us, well, we're still going to go to schools and ask you to play in our leagues, but we're going to look for a partnership. And they went to the National Federation of State High School Associations. And they've started to work with principal associations to develop an esports program for states. Announced last month, the Maine Principals Association has signed up with Play Versus as a turnkey league system. And starting in the fall, if twenty teams participate in one specific esports game, it will be a state varsity, state championship game. In that same email, they stated that they had interest in over eighty schools in the State of Maine. So I don't think that bar is hard to catch. And just a real quick rundown of this year with esports. At the beginning of the year, when we first formed as a club, we participated in the Club Fair that happens. And by the end of it, I had fifty-two kids signed up. A little bit too many at that moment in time, since we're just trying to get started off. But it showed large promise and a large interest. Towards the end, the technology department sponsored one team for us to participate in Play Versus, and we participated in the League of Legends game. Interesting fact about my team, it was four seniors and one freshman. And it was really interesting seeing those dynamics come together and play together. And we streamed all our games to Twitch and to CETV. We streamed to the channel. We streamed to the livestream of the channel. We also have all our games available on YouTube, Apple TV, and Roku. And this spring, we just started our spring season. I just actually came running over from the high school for our preseason. We were participating in three games. I have a team playing League of Legends again, once again, Play Versus. We're also going to take a look at the HSL. We're going to participate with both Overwatch and CS:GO. So thank you for the presentation. I also wanted to use this thank you real quick to Donna, to Jeff, to Kathy over there, who attended one of our games, to a lot of the administration staff, Nate Carpenter, Marcy Weeks, who also came to our games and have been very supportive of the program. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Can I ask a question?
Certainly.
First of all, wow. That was really, I mean, I've heard of this recently, but that was my first introduction. And so, one, I just want to express tremendous gratitude for informing us and teaching us about this esports, which isn't as new as I feel like it, I thought it was. So thank you to you.
For high schools, it is, especially in the State of Maine.
Yeah. So there was a picture of a bunch of students in a room, and they all looked like they were on computers. So I'm just wondering, a tiny bit of logistics here. How does it work with them using... Do they use their own devices? Do you go into a computer lab? And you said you had fifty-two students signed up. It was too many. What is your max? And what is the number that you're able to handle right now? And how, logistically, how does it work a little bit there? Technology-wise, with the hard...
I think it was this one you were talking about.
Yes. We don't have something like that.
No, we do not.
So, you know, pie in the sky, maybe we want that. But what do we have? Can you sort of paint a picture of what it's like?
So you might have noticed at the beginning of my presentation, and you might not have noticed at the beginning of my presentation, a lot of this core of the presentation is from... Some slides provided to you by CDW. This is the group that taught, that we saw the presentation. It's a company that's trying to sell you stuff. But one of the guys that was there was extremely passionate about esports. And I'm actually, I do one meeting a month with... Right now, the core group is two other schools, Westbrook and Waterville. Waterville got a huge grant, anonymous donation grant, to start their esports program a year ahead of us. And so they were able to come up with a couple of core machines. But the guy from CDWG, he said that you have to look at the machines in a different light. You can't just think of them as esports devices. Anything... When we start taking a look at STEM programs, which I am hoping to push as well, any of those types of STEM programs, 3D modeling, video editing, any of those heavy core programs require hardware to actually push those programs. And they need a little bit more oomph than our usual lab machines. So the way I've been approaching a lot of the computers, and we have gotten a small core of computers to start, is those are not only going to be the esports program computers. That is the start of the high school STEM program. So that we can start using those devices as well, not only for esports after school, but during school as well. So a lot of schools are trying to adapt that. A lot of schools are looking at funding. A lot of schools are trying to figure out how to work. The two leagues, HSL requires a thirty-seven-dollar entrance fee, and Play Versus is a sixty-four-dollar entrance fee per seat. So it's a lot of trying to figure out, how are we going to pay for these things? And the group and I, you know, they're dealing with, okay, how do we come up even with that money to be able to participate? A sport like League of Legends, the hardware, we could play on the laptops that we provide to our seventh and eighth-grade students if we really wanted to. Each school has to look at what they can participate in, what they can fit, and at least what they can get started with. It's a hard little thing that everybody, right now, and fortunately, I've got a crew of people from these different schools that are sitting down talking about it, that are asking the same exact question, "How are we going to get the hardware?" But one of the first things that flew out the door is, no, we're not going to buy those seats that you saw. But it is a very hard type of thing, and it's one of those slow buildups. I have seven computers right now that are decent. And one of the programs, one of the things I did when I got the money to be able to have those, I actually had the kids come in. They were in the back room here, in the Jordan Conference Room, building those machines themselves with my guidance and some seniors' guidance as well. So we took what we had, and I made it something that they could learn from. And they were all excited because they were like, "Oh, we're going to take this right now. We're going to go back." Because I was hoping to build a machine. Now I know how to do it. I'm so excited. So it's a learning process that everybody's facing.
Yeah. Sounds like you got to get a boosters group set up, too.
I am desperate for it as well.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Jason.
Principals. I'm on task now. Principal updates. Jason, would you like to start?
I can't. I don't really want to talk with Jason.
I was going to say, that's a hard act to follow.
I'm not so sure about that.
Yeah.
Thanks. That is very interesting, isn't it? I had no idea. Well, good evening, and it's great to be here tonight. Good to see you all. Just, I'll share a few things, a couple of updates that I think are really important. It's always hard to pick and choose what to share because there's so many amazing things going on at the school, as you all know. And so I want to just give you an update on our new student leadership opportunity, the Peaceful Pon Cove Fourth Grade Helpers. So throughout the past few years, something that we have been missing has been student leadership opportunities. So we had a small team of teachers, and I mentioned this at the last meeting, that it was about to get up and running. So we had a small group of teachers submit a grant to CF. So CF has really made this possible to fund some of the equipment and materials needed to help, so the teachers can facilitate this group. So the idea is that we encourage fourth graders to be leaders in the school, influential in the school, and help. And so we, now that we've moved a little further in the process, we have forty fourth-grade students who are interested and applied, and they're all accepted and they're participating. On January 23rd, we had our first leadership training for the team. And it was really special. It was after school at the fire station, three to six p.m., pizza for dinner, and Officer Galvin, myself, Sarah Fori-Pettit, and some of the key players in this initiative, Terabuchi, fourth-grade teacher, Bree Gallagher, school counselor, Erin Taylor, school nurse. A lot of other people have helped. Our tech integrator, Tom Sheltrey, helped to make some videos for the program. And so it's really, it's a grassroots effort, and it's really working out well. So the students are proud to be leaders of the school and excited to get started. So what they're doing right now, the fourth-grade helpers, they're filling out interest surveys so we can kind of determine what areas they would most like to help with. And then after break, they'll begin their responsibilities. So I'll just give you, from this packet that Terabuchi gave me, some of the possible options would be kindergarten lunch buddies, kindergarten recess buddies, hallway helpers. We have peacemaker lessons, where some students would actually volunteer to help Mrs. Gallagher teach lessons in the classrooms of younger grades. So it's, as we continue to, you know, develop, build our climate and culture, this is just one more example of something that's happening for students and staff, and it's wonderful. So also, one more thing. We have a very special visitor, and it came about in a really cool way, so I wanted to share this. We have a very popular children's author, Chris Van Duzen. He's coming to Pon Cove tomorrow. And he is going to be working with, reading his latest book. And his latest book is If I Built a School. He's going to be reading it to all students. We're going to follow the Allied Arts Schedule and the library schedule. And he's going to be reading the book to those students. And so he, Chris was born in Portland, and he continues to be a Maine resident. And if you may recognize some of these books, he illustrated the famous Mercy Watson books. If any of you can remember those, The Pig and the children's books. And The Circus Ship is another one that he wrote. So some really popular books. probably read all those books with our kids. And the way this came about was, Cam Rosenbloom, our librarian, actually shared this with me. There were a group of Pond Cove parents, a small group, were at a benefit auction for the Children's Museum of Science, and they bid on this and won, and then gifted it to the school, his visit. So, that's really special, too. So, another example of that community coming together for the kids. So, that's really all I have for tonight. Any questions for me? Or, yeah?
Can I just, Troy's not here, and he perhaps would be the one to ask, but how is Peaceful, you know, the initiative that you have going with Peaceful Pond Cove, is that being carried into the middle school, or is it really just...
I'm not sure of the answer to that. I do know, I mean, this is, this is the second year of it for us, and so, but, you know, we have, I haven't been approached about the same initiative following up, but I'm sure Troy could speak to what similar initiatives they have. But, I don't know about that consistency from 4th grade to 5th grade, but it's something to really think about. Anytime we have consistency, right, it really supports the transition of those kids to the next level.
Yeah.
So, thank you for that. No, it's a great...
We're trying to make ourselves in alignment. Thank you.
Yes. Anything else? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Troy's not with us tonight, so...
Okay. So, we have principals to add.
So, I have two things. One is Lisa Melanson, one of the English teachers in the school, sent me an email last week, that said that we've had five students recognized for either gold or silver key recognition in the New England, for New England Scholastic Writing Competition. So, those students are Lydia Branson, who's a freshman, who received a silver, silver key recognition. Claire McDonald is a sophomore. She received gold key and silver keys for different, different things that she wrote. Emma Halter, who's a 9th grader, received gold key recognition. And Lacy Raybeck, who is a, sorry, I can't read my own writing. Lucy Raybeck, who's a 9th grader, she had an honorable mention in that competition. And then, Charlotte Thayer, who's a senior, submitted multiple works and received both silver key and gold key recognition. So, that's, that was a really neat sort of awards, and I wanted to mention their names. And then, consistent with a theme that I started with a long letter to parents today, high school parents, I did share some information from what's called the Maine Integrated Youth Health Survey, that was administered in the second week of February, so basically, a year ago. It takes a, and it's a survey that's taken by high schools and middle schools across the state, and we got our results just a month or so ago, and we've been spending some time looking at those. And, as I mentioned in the letter, that went out to all parents and students, most of the results were very, very positive, in terms of how we fare, how our students report their experiences compared to students across the state. There were, and the purpose of the letter really was to share a number of three specific facts, that I think merit some conversation, and have start generated a conversation in high school, and we wanted to generate some conversation at home among families as well, because that is super powerful in terms of influencing kids' decisions about use. So, the three facts were, the number of students, the percentage of students who report having had drunk alcohol at least once in the 30 days previous to the survey administration. So, since the survey is administered second week in February, you look back, so you're talking from essentially early January to early February. So, and that's deliberate, because the survey folks want to exclude long holidays, which, so, so, I mentioned in, in the letter, that our students unexpectedly reported a 10% increase in, in number, percentage of students who reported yes to that question of having drunk, drunk, used alcohol at least once before, within those 30 days. So, we've given this survey a number of times. In 2011, the number, the percentage for that was 22 point, the same question, it's 22.5%. In 2013, it was 20.6%. In 2015, it was 20.5%, so super steady, flat. Then, 2019, we didn't do it in 2017, 2019, it's, it jumped from an average around 20 to 21, all the way up to 32.4. So, that's big. It's a big jump, and we thought it was worth highlighting and sharing that information with parents, and having us all engage in conversation about where that comes from. And one of the things that, I was surprised by that, because there are not signs of it in high school. We are not having kids coming intoxicated to high school. This is the first year we've ever had zero self-referrals under the school board substance abuse policy. Normally, by this time, we have 10 to 20. Last year was a little bit of a dip, and then this year, it's literally at zero. We have not had any. Talked to our school resource officer, David Galvin, and the chief of police, who validated what David said, which is that the police are not getting called to break up parties in Cape Elizabeth, as they used to. So, it's a sort of an invisible, makes me wonder, you know, what's, what's going on. One of the good news, I think, that comes out of it, and this is just anecdotal, is one of our social workers, who's also a substance abuse counselor, talks to a lot of kids about substance issues, and one of the things that the kids are very adamant about, and she believes them, is that they are honoring that line of not drinking and driving when they're drinking. So, that's good. But, that also, then that may in part be responsible for why we're not seeing the signs, because kids are not, thankfully, driving under the influence of alcohol. So, that's great. But, it does raise some questions that I think are worth, we are, we are, we are asking ourselves those questions. And the other number I shared in the, in the letter today of alcohol use is up to 32.4% who reported having used alcohol at least once in the previous 30 days before the survey. 41.3% of those 32.4% said they had drank five or more glasses of alcohol in a period of not more than two hours. So, it's essentially binge drinking. So, if you do the math, 32.4%, 41.3%, it's about, it's 13.4% of our students in those 30 days. I will say that the good news is, and there's some concern here that merits attention, but it means the majority of our students are not, and I think this is important, always important to note, when you get into discussions about substance use, the vast majority of our, or the significant majority of our students are not using alcohol, and a vast majority of our students are not engaged in binge, binge drinking. But, the numbers are up, they've spiked quietly and silently, which is, to me, the mystery of it. Marijuana use, same question, past 30 days before the survey, have you used marijuana at all? So, the number in 2011 was 14.9% reported yes, they did. 2013 was 14.9%. 2015 was 16.5%. So, in the 14 to 15% range. 2019, 25.4%. So, again, a 10% increase. That one was less surprising to me, because I think, as I mentioned in the letter, we, the adult community as a whole, I'm not saying Cape Elizabeth, but the adult community as a whole, has sent teenagers really mixed messages about the dangers of marijuana. And, it's pretty well documented that whatever you think about legalization or not legalization of marijuana, it is not good for the teenage brain, which is still developing, to be exposed to it. So, the later students, young people start using marijuana, the better they, they will be in the long term. So, so we see again, a sort of a 10% rate of, rate of increase in use. And so, in the letter, I say, as a school, we're looking at some things and having conversations about, you know, are there some communications, some more education we need to do, some more of communication on our part, but have also encouraged parents to have conversations at home, among one another, and with their kids. Because the one consistent message that you get from any, any research you look at, is that the single most important factor in kids' decisions, whether or not to use or not to use, is what the message is they're getting from their parents. There's no question about it. It's far and away, and the vast majority, so, so I don't know, I don't know exactly. But, but that was the end of the letter, is to say, please have these conversations. We've got wonderful kids, they're not going to be perfect, they're going to experiment. Kids our age experimented, we're never going to get to zero, and that's an unrealistic goal, but when we, but at the same time, as an educational institution, it's, when we have that data, I think it's important to share the data, and have people at least talking about it, and being aware of it, and taking some action as they can. So, I don't know if there's any questions about that. It's usually all positive news for the principals report, but I thought it was important to share some, some other important information as well, that I know everybody will want to have. So...
Can I just ask a question? Forgive me that I don't know, I wasn't checking my email, but did you send that email to parents? Did you send it to the board?
Parents'...
And the board?
I sent it to the superintendent, I sent it to all parents, all high school parents and students. Oh, and I did want to say, that the letter was, was vetted by a whole bunch of people, social workers, school counselors, the chief of police, our SRO. So, if you haven't gotten it, I'd be glad, I...
I'm just wondering if you can forward it on, so that all school board members, if they don't have somebody in the high school, can...
I can, I can send that to them.
Be able to see that as well.
Sure. Would be glad to do that. Okay.
Thank you for that information.
Thank you. Okay.
Next up, Dell.
I don't have a whole lot that I'm able to share with you, but I want to speak a little bit about professional development. I tried to speak a little bit about what we're doing during early releases. So, last week, during early release, we've started what will be a series of kind of transition meetings for the students who are transitioning either from Pond Cove to middle school, or from middle school to high school. This past week, the Pond Cove Special Education Teachers and Related Service Providers met with the middle school teachers and special, related service providers. To start that process, we're trying to have the transitions for our students be as seamless as possible, and the more information we can share, the, usually, the better that transition ends up being. I also want to review, we currently have 169 students in special education. Those of you paying attention to that number, it has crept up just a little bit. We are still at about 10.5% as far as the number of students receiving special services. The last time that I heard from the state, the state average was 18.5, I believe, and it may be even higher than that at this time. Some districts are well into the 20s. But, so we're doing well at holding the line, but it has crept up. Kind of, to give you the big picture, we do have eight students that are slated to graduate this year. We have 20 students moving up from middle school to high school. We currently have 17 students that will be moving from Pond Cove to middle school, and we also have 12 students coming in from Child Development Services. We have 21 students that are in the referral pipeline, and we have three students that are outplaced.
Thank you so much.
I'm so relieved the dog's still here. Let's just see if I have, had you turned that off? Okay, great. I am not going to talk about professional development. So, you may know that we have a new website. We had a soft launch at the start of this calendar year. We're going to have a formal launch to the website and the app on February 27th, and I thought, in the meantime, I would give you a little introduction to the website. So, as soon as it comes up, I wonder if we could darken the lights in front of you? Can you see that okay? Oh, I guess it's okay now. Okay, good. All right. So, I'm just going to go through the features of the website, and if you want to interrupt me at any point, say, stop, wait, what did you just do? That's fine. So, when you, when you go to our website, it's going to open to this page, it does default to the Cape Elizabeth School Department page. We actually have four sites currently. So, if you go up to the top under Sites, and click that dropdown menu, you'll see that in addition to the School Department, you have Pond Cove, the Middle School, and the High School. And we are in the process of building an athletics site. To the right, you have this button that says English. If you click that, then you will see all of the languages of our English learners. Any language that is available in Google Translate is available to us, in terms of having our website translated. So, I personally am just really happy about that. To the right...
Can you click on one of those? Do Icelandic? Can I...
Oh. Or, eh, whatever. Okay. So... Oh, I, I should have, there, there we go. Okay.
Oh, that's fantastic.
I'm assuming it's accurate?
You don't know?
Do you still want to see Icelandic, or should I go on?
I kind of do. Do you mind?
If you do, that's my language.
All right. Oh, you can tell us if it's accurate. I hope that says, welcome to Cape Elizabeth.
That's good.
Yeah? Master?
I'm going to continue in English, though, if that's okay.
You can go to English.
All right, thanks. So, then, to the right of that, you have the search bar. Okay, something to keep in mind in terms of the sites, that I forgot to mention, is that the interface on each site is the same, so you can get confused if you don't pay attention. So, just remember, just to, if you're feeling a little lost, to double-check that you're on the site that you think that you're on. And, people who are regularly visiting one of the school sites may just want to bookmark that site, because again, when you go to the, to the School Department page, it's going to open to the School Department page. Okay, so, this picture is called Our Gallery, and we can have any number of pictures on there. We have been told that the more pictures we have, the slower the load times will be, so we'll try to keep that to a minimum, but, but we're thinking sort of in the four to six range, and it'll scroll through. And then, the words are Our Gallery, and you see that, or I'm sorry, our bulletin board. So, we have the link right there, because everyone wants to know about the budget, but we'll also be posting school closings there as well, for people who don't get the notifications. Okay, then, each site has news, events, and live feed. News would be your longer articles about things that are going on in the schools. Say, for example, the high school principal had written a letter to parents about the results of a recent survey, that would be a good place to inform the community about that. And then, the events, that's synced to our Google Calendar. So, on the School Department site, it's synced to the public-facing calendar, the external-facing public calendar, and then on the, the school sites, it's synced to those school calendars. And, let's see, then, live feed is your Twitter equivalent. You are limited, I think, to 280 characters, so. And as people get more familiar with how to post, and it's really easy to post, we hope to see many more news articles, and many more tweet-like live feeds. Then, at the bottom, you'll see that there's a link to our Facebook page, and a link to the, our Twitter page, and then, there's also, you can also download the app, either from the Google Store or the Apple Store there. Okay, so then, the only button I haven't talked about is this button here, the menu button. I'm going to ignore the buttons there for now, but this is where the bulk of our content is going to live. This is for, for static information that doesn't change a lot, unlike, say, a news article, or even a, a live feed that's, that's, that's more rapid. So, some things I wanted to point out, and you can see the, the headings, Central Office, Nutrition Services, oops, Community School Board, Health Services, Special Services, HR, and Teaching and Learning. The calendars are linked here, those are also on the... Those are also on the school pages, I'm sorry, the school sites. So you could choose the current calendar or the calendar that you approve for next year. School Building Committee, for people who are interested in that, is right here. So you click on that, and you get all of the information that's been posted so far. There, of course, is our school boards. We have our policies. We have all the meeting information. We're in the process of transitioning that information over from the town site where it currently lives. It will eventually live here. I just want to mention, for those of you at home who haven't seen this, but we have bios and pictures of our school board members. Nice. Okay. And then, something else I'll mention is that if you click on some of these headings right now, nothing will come up, that we are, we are in the process of adding content. Particularly encourage you not to spend a lot of time in the Teaching and Learning section right now. That's common. Yeah, okay, I'm just going to move on. So I wanted to now go to the high school site to show you a couple of things. So again, notice how much it looks like the School Department site. It's a different picture. It says, welcome to the high school instead of to the School Department, but you have your news, your events, your live feed. And then on the menu, there's a couple of things that are different from, the buttons are slightly different. So news, events, and live feed up at the top, those are shortcuts to those sections that I mentioned. Dining is where you to go, and this is true of all the school sites, to access the school menus. Power School is the shortcut to the student and parent login. And, and then Staff. I think this is really cool, but so let's say that you remembered you had a conversation with that social studies teacher, but you don't remember that teacher's name. You can go over here. Right now, it's showing all of the high school staff. But if you click here, you can filter. So I go to Social Studies, and look at that! There's all the social studies teachers.
Thank you, thank you.
And that's true of all of the sites. So if you know that you're, well, I'd hope you know the name of your child's third grade teacher, but let's just suppose you didn't. You could filter for third grade, and it would come up, or you can filter for content area, et cetera.
Are we working to get pictures of teachers up there as well? Hopefully?
I think the best way to get people who may not want to have their picture taken, taken, is for, say, someone like a parent or a community member to say, boy, it would be great to have your picture up on the website.
Some of them don't want their pictures up.
And also, it did mean having to walk down to facilities and have your picture taken, and people get busy, and so. So I, I can't assume that everybody who doesn't have their picture up there doesn't want to have their picture, I think.
I guess I would just like to encourage teachers to be willing to do that. I didn't want my picture up either, and I did it.
Yes, yes. And yours is much bigger than their thumbnail.
Exactly.
So you guys can do it. Did you see that?
And you didn't change the page for a minute. It was up there for a long time. Anyway, I think it can be very helpful to parents and
Yeah, I agree.
So I just would encourage people to make that little effort if possible, teachers. But I understand as well.
So then the other thing I wanted to mention is under Parents Guardians, again, that Parents Guardians heading, we try to exist on all three school sites. We tried to keep the headers the same, just to make it easy, easier if you had students in multiple schools. So you see the Nutrition Services Payment Portal, Registration Information, Volunteering. So I expect this is a place where, where parents would spend a lot of time. Middle School and Poncovee are currently the only sites that, they don't have the student site because pretty much things that students would need to know would be contained within school information. It makes sense that at the high school level, there would be things that, like Navions, for example, that high school students are going to want to be able to access. And there's also a link to athletics for them under Students, and the link to the athletics, while we're building athletics site, is under School Information on the other two schools. But, which I guess my point here really is, spend a little time just exploring and getting to know where the, where the content is located. We tried to make it as logical as possible, but that doesn't mean that you won't need to invest a little bit of time in just getting, building familiarity. And finally, we are in the process of working on instructions with pictures, like those circles with arrows that show you to click here, and then click here, and click here. And we'll be sending those out to parents with, when we formally launch what I have just shown you.
So there's still time for, to get to see feedback?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, is there, has there?
Well, okay, let me just back up a little bit.
Certainly. I, I didn't, I
There, there, there is, there is a lot that is hardwired in, that we don't have the ability to change.
Certain things cannot change, and content can definitely change.
Content can definitely change.
And can be moved around and all that.
Correct.
Was there ever a need for an internal, because this is public facing, is there ever a need for an internal website where the teachers can log in, they can chat with one another, as well as, I noticed that there's forms over there, but there could be some forms for them to fill out for vacation, sick time, notification, letting people know that way?
So, so I'm going to answer your question with a couple of examples. So on the Poncovee site, there is, under Staff, there's a Staff Handbook. You can only access that Staff Handbook if you have a Cape Elizabeth school staff address. So it's only shared with Cape Elizabeth staff. So it's something that, it's on, it's on this public website, but it's, it's easy for teachers to access, but there's information in there, like security information, that we wouldn't want available to the general public. The forms, some of them are password protected and some are not. So, I don't know if that fully answers your question, but, and as far as communicating.
So logging on, when you click on Staff, does it allow you to log in? Or how you, this is public facing right now, right?
Correct.
But when you click on that Staff?
So I'm not going to do that because I am logged in, so it would pull it up on my computer. So you can check that at home.
So where did you log in, is the question?
Where did I log into the website?
Well, this is a
No, wait, I'm not, I'm sorry, I'm not logged into the website. I'm logged
You're seeing the internal stuff?
Correct.
Okay. You see the
Yeah.
Stuff that you worked on, okay.
I'm logged into the, I have the ability to log into the handbook right now without having to
Okay.
I don't know how to explain it.
No, but when the public faces, on the top right hand corner, they may have to sign in.
So, there, parents do not have to sign in. Teachers have to sign in if they're going to load content.
I think it's similar, if I can interrupt. I think it's similar to if I were to go in there and go to the Power School, I'd have to log in to get into the Power School of my own child. So it seems like if there was a staff member that was going in to fill out certain forms, they might have to log in with their Cape Elizabeth website address
Correct.
To be able to access that information.
Correct, right. So the Staff Handbook is a Google form, is a Google Doc. And so to access that Google Doc, you have to log in. You have to be logged in onto Cape Elizabeth school's address. If I try to, if I try to access that, that Staff Handbook, and I'm on my personal Gmail account, it's not going to let me in.
Right.
Yeah. Although, boy, if you can get into that Staff Handbook right now, of course, you have a Cape Elizabeth school's address too, so. Worth checking. Are you going to say anything about the app? It's available. It's, yeah, I mean, it is available to you now. You can download it, but like the, the posters announcing it and that we're super excited, that's all part of the formal launch on the 27th.
Thank you so much.
Oh, yeah, you're welcome.
A huge improvement from how it used to be. I'm grateful for the time of the various members.
Kathy's worked hard on this website.
Yeah, a lot of people who have put in a lot of time for it, so thank you. We have Marcy.
Hi, good evening, everyone. So your charts tonight, your colored bar chart, shows us at the typical spending percentage as of January 31st would be 58%. And at the far right, you'll see that the total general fund spent is at 56%. So we're still doing good, holding strong. Last year at this time, we were at 55% spent for general fund monies. So I wanted to just point out to you what that difference would be. If you look at your chart, right next to the general fund, green arrow, there are two, two items that might, you know, call your attention. One of them is the facilities maintenance costs. That is, you know, it's in the, the one that's for facilities maintenance. That's up higher because the actual repairs and maintenance expenses right now are at 86% spent. Last year at this time, they were at 75% spent. So that's causing us to go up a little higher, so we're really trying to keep that holding strong. So that's, that's a challenge right now, especially since we're in the middle of February. So that's going to be our, our focus. The next one, right next to it, as you can see, that's jumped up in the yellow, don't be afraid, that's just, that's where school nutrition lives. That's the category for school nutrition. There's a one-time transfer that we make from the general fund to subsidize the school nutrition program, and so we've made that transfer in total. So don't be afraid, that's just done now, and then that won't move up very much further for the rest of the year. So now, now we can have an accurate picture for, on the school nutrition side after this.
Good to know. Okay. Yes?
Going forward, and this is probably for Donna and Marcy, will we move the nutrition into its own line or deal with it in a different way so that we don't have this sort of big one-time? Or will there be discussion about it?
We have started to deal with it in a different way, and Marcy, maybe you want to explain that a little bit?
Yes, so we are approaching that into the new budget year. We definitely have to have school nutrition as its own separate fund, segregated for the state purposes for accounting. And so the importance of that is, is continuing that, and we have that. Excellent. Right now, we are moving forward to having the monies, at least one transfer done at the beginning of the year, just one in entirety going into school nutrition. That's mostly what's done. Our other alternative is to have the monies go directly into the school nutrition fund itself. So we're, we're moving towards that, and that's definitely what other schools tend to do as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marcy. So I have good news tonight. It's always nice to give good news. We received our ED 279s, which is our state subsidy report late in January, and we were notified of an increase from the state of $36,321 over FY '20, so that's really good news. And just to note, $44,415 of that amount, of the total amount, is a result of our participation in the Greater Sebago Educational Alliance, so, which is our regional service center. So we are seeing a benefit from that, and we do, I, I continue to meet with that Education Association every month, and it's alive and well, and we're doing lots of things together, so it's very worthwhile. More good news is about our revolving renovation grant. We did, we had 12 applications, and we received approval of six of those projects. And those were projects that were identified in the needs assessment report, and they totaled $390,429. One project will be in Poncovee, one will be in the middle school, and four will be at the high school. And if you remember, 30% of the funding of those projects will be forgiven by the state, and that's $117,128.70, so that's like free money. And the remaining 70% will be paid back at a 0% interest rate, which is $54,660.06 over five years. The state-granted awards for debt service help our state subsidy in the future. Let's take it into our state subsidy account, moving forward for the five years when we're paying off the debt, so that will help us with subsidy. According to the state requirements, we are advertising now for RFQs, requests for qualifications from professional engineering and licensed architectural firms. So we have to, we have to advertise twice, and so we will hold interviews with those firms that we select to interview, and choose a firm based on the interview. So we'll have to have an interview committee. So you may be called on to be the interview committee. The third piece of good news, we just found out, I think, yesterday, is that the state has awarded us a types, one type C bus. So we applied for a bus grant, and we got it. So we will purchase the bus next year, and then the state following year will reimburse us. So that is a value of $95,990.40. So that was really, Marcy texted me last night and let me know, so that was really good. And it's a smaller bus, and that we can use to carry small groups of students, for example, the groups, the group of students that go to Pavs or smaller field trips. So that bus will really come in handy.
It's as small as 12 passengers?
12 passengers. Right. Oh, I'm not sure about that. I said that. I think it's 12 passengers, but I'm not sure. It is a bus, though. It's not a van. It's a bus. So it's good news. And you have the enrollment sheet in your packet. We have dropped 13 students from last year at this time, but, but really, in the grand scheme of things, it's holding pretty steady, so. Any questions?
Thank you and Marcy both so much for applying for these grants for the, the bus and the school improvements. I appreciate it.
We're trying.
Those 13 students are from throughout the schools, so any specific school, middle school, high school?
Oh, great.
You should do it.
Oh, well, you'll see the chart, and you can see where the, the specific drops are, so if you'll look at, have a look at that chart.
And that's just from last year. That's not from last month.
Pardon me, from last year, yeah.
Five from last month. I wanted to echo Kimberly's sentiments, and mostly because I think even professionals that work here are told, oh, Cape Elizabeth will never get that money. Don't bother applying. Don't even try. We keep getting told this. And I think that it bears, kind of celebrating the fact that you and Marcy said, and it doesn't matter that you think we're not going to get the money. We're going to try. And I think it's fantastic that, that, you know, we had this opportunity mostly due to our needs assessment and our, our cooperation with Colby Company and Engineers and the Scott Simons Architects, being ready to do this. But, you know, you found this. You saw that it was sort of quietly announced in July, and we were prepared, and Marcy was always scanning and looking and talking and going in and working on this. So I believe that, you know, every nickel helps, and I'm so appreciative that we sort of aren't listening to the naysayers, that we're going out and just trying and doing what we can. Thank you.
You'll never get it if you don't ask, so it's
That's right.
I have a quick question about the, what is it? The Greater Sebago Education Association. If you can just speak a little bit to how long we've been in that? Because it hasn't been very long.
This is the second year.
Right. And I think that's just a testament, again, to what Elizabeth was just mentioning, the going after. Could you just explain a little bit to the public what it is and why we're saving money by being a part of it?
So it's made of a group of, I believe there's 12 different districts now. And the purpose of the group is to find areas where we can work together. For example, professional development. Often, say, the Phys Ed department is kind of, in each district, an entity unto itself. And so right now, they're planning on Greater Sebago Educational Alliance Professional Development Day in March, where all of the Phys Ed teachers from the areas get together and have professional development. And there's, there's Special Education. And there's special education efforts. The special ed directors meet, and they've been talking a lot about the children coming from CDS and the services that we have to provide. Transportation, there's a real problem in our area of transporting students to special schools, so there's been some partnerships with doing that. Food services, working together to get better prices on different things. So there's all kinds of efforts that are moving forward as a result of this, so.
That's great.
Lots going on.
I think it's fabulous, and I think it's just more than mentioning in a little more detail, so thank you. Anything else?
That's it. Come on in.
New business. That's where we are, correct? Yes. May I have a motion, please?
I move we approve the request for sabbatical for Laura Briggs.
May I have a second?
Second.
I think as some of the discussion, we'd like to invite Laura up to talk once again about what she's planning.
In your packets, you have a description of the process and Laura's proposal, information that you need.
So Donna asked me to share a few comments with you. I'll try to keep it brief, because I think many of you were here, but perhaps not all of you when I was here in November. My name is Laura Briggs, and I'm in my ninth year of teaching sixth grade social studies and language arts at the middle school. I'm also a long-term parent in this district, although my youngest graduated in 2016, so I'm starting to feel like far away from that now. And back in November, I did come and request permission to take a one-semester sabbatical in the spring of 2021. I'm really looking forward to that opportunity for both personal renewal as well as professional renewal. On a personal level, my husband and I hope to do a little bit of traveling. And professionally, I'm really excited about a proposal that I have for the district. What I'd like to do is spend most of my sabbatical developing a new class. It would be an integrated social studies and language arts class for eighth graders that would focus largely on the topic of immigration and migration movements within the United States. The social studies curriculum at eighth grade is a U.S. history curriculum, so I would tie it into that curriculum, and I feel it fits very well with language arts as well. There's many, many pieces of literature and opportunities to discuss issues related to immigration. As I'm thinking about designing the class, I have three major principles that are kind of guiding my thinking. The first is that I'm interested in engagement. How do we engage our students more in what we're doing? I think that engagement in history involves connecting the past to the present so that our kids really see why understanding our history can help us understand what's going on today. I think engagement also involves using creative ways to get kids more involved in what we're doing. In social studies, that often comes to creating simulations, debates, historical reenactments, dramatic reenactments, writing letters to the editor, going on field trips, inviting speakers in. I want to create a class where there's lots of this type of engaging activity for our eighth graders. The second piece is rigor. This is a really competitive school district, and I think we pride ourselves. I know I sent my children to the school district because of the quality of education here. And I think we owe it to our middle schoolers, our eighth graders, to really have a rigorous curriculum. They're going to high school in a year. I want this class to not only be fun and engaging, but I want them to be doing a lot of writing, a lot of reading, and a lot of research work. I found even as a sixth-grade teacher that when we ask our kids to rise to the occasion, they can do so much. And so I really see this class as being a way to push them to apply those skills and to hold them to the high standard I know they're capable of doing. The third piece for me is connection. I want them to connect both past and present. I want them to connect between the global and the local when they study the story of other immigrants, that they think about theirselves and their own individual journeys. How do I connect the global to the individual? And my final piece that I really want to connect them with is a personal connection. My goal, and I feel it's somewhat ambitious, but that's why I need the sabbatical to do this, I really would like at the end of this class, for every single, it'd be about 45 kids, every single eighth grader in that class to make a personal connection with an immigrant in the greater community. By that, I define that as Portland, Westbrook, South Portland. You know, we have a lot of immigrants here in Portland. They range from people like my dad, who came here in the 1950s from South America, to asylum seekers who Claire Ramsfatham and I were teaching English to this summer at the Expo Center, and everything in between. And what I'd like to really do is put our kids in touch with them. At first, I thought I would be doing that perhaps through community service work. I'm stepping back from that a little bit, thinking it may be more field research. One of my concerns, as I began to think logistically of how to do that, was how am I going to get 45 eighth graders to do community service when they don't even drive? But I'm thinking some type of a field research project where they actually meet with immigrants in the community, learn their stories, interview them, make the connections, and begin to see, gee, this person's story is quite different than my own, and this person's also very similar to me. And I feel like it would be an incredible experience for them in terms of really connecting to the community and applying their academic learning to what's going on around us locally and within our nation. Really excited about it. My vision would be that I would take, again, the spring of 2021 off to do this work and come back in September, ready to teach this class. And I'm glad to take any questions you may have.
It sounds great. I'm excited for you. I'm excited for the class. I think it'll be wonderful. I wish my kids hadn't gone through eighth grade yet. I have a couple more to come, but I think I've had three of yours, so one or two more?
They just keep coming. Yeah. That's great. Well, why don't we take a vote if there's no more questions for Laura? All those in favor? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Really excited for you. Thank you, and for the district. Next up, item 7B.
I move we consider to approve the current proposed 2020 to 2023 administrative contract.
Second. Any comments?
Would Del, please, come on up?
No. So at this time, we are going to sign that contract, but on behalf of the school board and especially Hope Straw and myself, I just want to say thank you to the administrative negotiators. We felt like it was a very positive and productive negotiation, and we're happy to sign this contract.
Well, thank you, because we felt exactly the same way, and we really appreciated working with you folks. And I thought we've covered a lot of ground in a very short period of time. So thank you.
Before we vote, will you sign it?
She says sign it.
So I'll sign one copy and get to you, and then do you have a copy?
I do not have a copy that has the signature page.
All right, so Donna has that, if you don't mind.
Sorry about the punch holes, but...
It's okay. So we'll just sign those in exchange.
All right. I don't think this one has a signature.
There, check and see, because they're double-sided.
Oh, it might be on the back? No, it's a waiver for medical coverage.
Oh, that's not the signature page? Sorry.
A board member should have it.
Oh, no, that's the medical waiver. Sorry.
I'm like, I have it.
You can sign her copy.
Then it's something with eights in the middle.
We'll make a copy of it.
It's on the page in the middle.
Because it's the appendix edit.
Yeah. It's weird. I looked beforehand, so I'd be prepared.
Oh, there's two, there's...
Right, the back page, is this it?
There's three-page eights, but I found the one.
Oh, yeah. There's a regular...
We'll fix that next time, Del, this agreement.
Elizabeth, is this the page you're looking at?
He has it. He's got it. We'll fix that next time. Back to the superintendent. I think that's good, but a handshake maybe? Thank you, Susan.
So are we all set with discussion, we think? Anything else, any other comments? All those in favor? I would just like to say thank you to Hope and Elizabeth on behalf of the school board for all the work that you've done. I'm learning more and more how intense and extensive that time commitment can be, so I appreciate it. And thank you to the administrators. It sounds like it was a great collaboration on both ends. Really appreciate it. Next up, we have, can I have a movement, please?
I move we approve the following 2019-2020 co-curricular stipends, as defined in our packets.
There are quite a few, so can I have...
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? I've got really low. I would just like to say once again, I appreciate those who step up for these roles after working a full day to then be out doing travel sports or even right here in Cape Elizabeth. It's much appreciated. I think it helps, much like the esports that we heard earlier, much like any of the activities, the mock trials, the concerts. This is just one avenue to expand your education here in Cape Elizabeth, and the support that comes from the adults that make it happen is wonderful. So thank you so much. All those in favor? Okay, great. So we are skipping item D. Can we have a motion for 7E, please?
I move we approve the Cape Elizabeth High School outing club field trip to Maine Forest Yurts in Durham, Maine on March 6th through 7th, 2020.
I have a second.
Second.
Sounds like fun. Sounds really exciting, so all those in favor? Fantastic. All right, next up, item 7F. May I have a motion?
I move we approve the Cape Elizabeth High School outing club field trip to Moxie Adventures Whitewater Rafting in West Forks, Maine on May 8th through the 9th, 2020.
Second. Thank you. Any comments, discussion, questions? Again, sounds like a fun club. All those in favor? Next up, are there any school board agenda requests that we can take note of? And committee reports. Start with policy.
Like, I'm on the top.
You're on deck.
So at long last, we have some policies emerging from the policy committee. So throughout the fall, we've been talking about a group of policies, sort of under the umbrella of our sexual harassment policy, and then the related policies around child abuse, and then another related policy around child sexual abuse. These have been very informative discussions. There's been participation widely across the district. We've had students, we've had many attendees from the staff, the psychologist, the school psychologists, the school guidance counselors, the school nurse. The meetings have been very well attended, probably the best attended policy committee meetings I've seen. So they were, there have been lengthy discussions, and we sort of worked through a lot of different issues, and ultimately, at this point, we're ready to move to a first reading of policy JLF, which is an existing policy, which is the reporting child abuse and neglect policy, as well as a new policy. And this is something that's mandated by the state, and it's a policy we have to have in place as well, which is a kind of a specific subset of child abuse reporting, which is child sexual abuse prevention and reporting. So these two policies sort of, they mirror each other, but the sexual abuse policy gets a little bit more specific about elements of our obligations and different parties' obligations with respect to what happens when an individual comes to them, if these issues are to become aware of them. So what we did was, these are both based on the Maine School Management Association samples, and you'll see red lines in your packets of what we've done to sort of clarify and customize. They don't go very far afield from them, because these are, these are sort of, this outlines our obligations under the law effectively. So the most notable edits that we've done is we want to be very clear that when you're in this world of child abuse reporting, this is what we, what, this is the policy you would look to if you're looking to the mandatory reporting requirements. So that under the state statute, there's a requirement that if we become aware of a child that's potentially subject to abuse, there are triggering events where it must be reported to the district attorney or to the Department of Health and Human Services. So in that policy, we also wanted to make sure that when we're, when a staff member or a family or a student is looking at this, they can, they know that there's also another related policy. So we've added references to the JLF-A, which is the Child Sexual Abuse Prevention Response Policy. Aside from that, there's really, there's some, you know, kind of tweaks we've made with respect to how our district works in terms of employees or volunteers who may have, you know, maybe to be making reference to the policies. And other than that, there's not sort of, not really any substantive changes that we're suggesting to these policies. Does anyone have any questions on what you're looking at here for the first reading? We're not voting on these tonight. This is just our first review. So you can still ask questions, but I'll keep going. So next, this coming month, at the end of February, we'll have a follow-up meeting where we can revisit these edits, and they'll come back to the board for a vote next month for adoption. At the upcoming meeting, we're also going to be revisiting, we're looking, still looking at ACAA, which is the Critical Sexual Harassment Policy. And what we're going to be doing at that meeting, and I'm sharing this with the public because it's been sort of a topic of discussion for the district, we're looking to clarify within that policy the district's understanding of certain staff members who have confidentiality requirements under their own licensing, licensing under the state. So there's certain staff members, licensed social workers, licensed psychologists, who have confidentiality requirements to maintain a licensure. So what we want to do is, we want to address that and acknowledge as a board that those staff members have those requirements under the ACAA policy. And there are only certain very, you know, sort of limited circumstances where that might not, might be, there might be acceptance to that, and that's when the mandatory reporting requirement is triggered, if there's child abuse, if it's a case of child abuse involved in that report. So what the board, I'm sorry, what the committee is going to do is we'll talk about that at the meeting at the end of this month, and hopefully we'll bring a revised version of ACAA for a first read next month for the board. And in doing so, I think, I'm hopeful that with, you know, the adoption of these two and then eventually of ACAA, we sort of covered, you know, the open issues that have been tackling for a few months now. Questions?
Thank you for that update. Thank you, also hope for all the time that you've put into this policy, the thoroughness and care that you've taken in looking at it. Technology Committee?
We haven't met.
We haven't met. PAS, we don't have an update there. Student Wellness. Buildings and Grounds. I guess I'm on that.
Take it away.
I guess I'm on that. We had a meeting on February 4th, and it was quite beneficial, I think. We talked about the mission or the charge, as well as connecting and reminding us of the Future Search, which compiled opinions from about 100 members of the community in order to bring them down to, I believe it was five goals, that we are taking as the will of the community based on the member participation a year ago last February. And we recognize that two of those goals were based, if you can hold one second, I'd actually like to refer to it. Okay. Yes, I do have it. Sorry, just one second, please, and I'll be able to find it. Of course, I don't have it. Well, we talked about the... Sorry, I'm not totally able to read this right now. Nope, I don't have it. Do you remember what the strategic goals are? I don't have them right on.
The strategic plan goals that focus safe and effective buildings.
It was safe and effective buildings.
Global competence, oh, the ones we address.
And then environmental.
Environmental.
Environmental responsibilities stewardship.
Okay, that was great. I was hoping to actually read the words, but I don't have them on me.
Oh, no, I think she wants...
Oh, they're right here. I do have them. Okay, first one that we were referring to was safe, sustainable, and effective facilities, and it mentions our schools will be safe and effective facilities, they will upgrade, be updated and maintained to meet the needs of students and staff in accordance with long-term financial planning. And the other strategic goal that we were referring to was environmental responsibility. The school department will prioritize environmental responsibility, including stewardship and sustainability. And so just reminding us, Superintendent Wolfram read and talked about those strategic goals, saying that that should really be in the center of our decision-making, what is the will of this district as we come up with an eventual recommendation. We then broke up into groups, small groups of five or six people, and talked about what does safe mean, what does effective facilities mean, what is our environmental responsibility as a district, and what is our financial responsibility to the district and the community. We got together then and had a nice conversation, sharing ideas and putting it all together into lists based on what the different groups came up with. And I think the small group work was beneficial, lots of voices could be heard and everybody, or most people, I would say, felt like they could participate. We then reviewed a document that, a chart that Marcy, I think, had put together for us, and Superintendent Wolfram, based on the needs assessment that was completed and the items that were considered red. And I believe there were like around 45 items, something like that. And I would just like to, you know, say to the public that red, what does red mean? My interpretation, based on what I heard from the engineers, Colby engineers and the architects, is that red is kind of like a, it should have been done yesterday kind of category. So just throwing that out there.
Yeah, we didn't even look at yellow.
We didn't even look at yellow, which is needs to be done kind of thing.
But not on fire yet.
But, right.
We'll become red soon.
Right, so I think it's, I think it's interesting, and I also would like to bring up, and I might be wrong, Marcy, when you were talking about the chart about where we are in spending, you said what percentage are we at with our facilities spending right now? Is it 83? 86? So we'll have to look into that a little bit more, maybe at the next building committee, about what that number means and why we're at 86. My guess is that things are failing and needing help now and can't wait. Yes, just to confirm, she's shaking her head yes. So then from there, after having that little conversation, or not little, after having that conversation, we did go about, Colby and Company did present with, to us, a document, and by no means was it exhaustive, but it was four potential options, and all we did was look through that. I just want to read what the options were. One was a phased lower school and middle school building replacement. That was option number one. Option two was concurrent lower school and middle school building replacement. Option three, framed off restoration and renovation of the existing lower and middle school, which I just think is important to add to that, that if an option like that were to happen, 40 portables would need to be housed somewhere in the town to allow that to happen, that work to happen. And then option four would be security and cafeteria updates. All of these include a little bit of update to the high school as well, we're not leaving you out, Jeff, so don't worry. And our hope is that in the next meeting to dig a little bit deeper into all of that.
They're available on the website, too.
They're all, those, those documents are available on the website under Building Committee in our new webpage there. I'm sure it'll be easy to find. And we have a next meeting coming up. It is Wednesday, March 4th, at 6:30 up over in the high school library. Anything else for those of you that were there? It was videotaped as well, so you are able to go back and review some of the conversation that we have. Yeah, thank you, Nasser. And legislatively, is on?
No updates.
No updates. Great.
Could, maybe we want to just mention our high school visit at this point? We forgot.
That would be great. Yeah, do you want to speak to it?
Sure. I guess we'll start with thank you so much, Mr. Shedd, for having Heather Altenberg and myself come and tour the high school on Thursday, I think it was, last week. We both had the opportunity to go and observe three classes and then had a student-led tour of the facilities. And I think, speaking for myself, I just came away impressed again with all that we are offering, the dynamic extracurricular programs that we have, the list of things that the three students identified participating in was extensive and varied, and it was, it was a real joy to see the teachers in action as well. So thank you, I appreciate you creating space for us to do that.
I'd like to add on to that, that it was really a wonderful experience and that I have heard through various committees and groups that I've been involved with here on the board, various teachers saying, "We'd love to have you come visit our school, we'd love to have you come visit our school." And it was always an intention, and it never sort of, unless you make it a priority and make it happen, it's hard to actually get in there and go do it, just because all of our lives are so full. So the conversation started at a workshop last November and in this, you know, then the holidays happened, and Mr. Shedd was quite accommodating to welcome us in. And I would just like to say that the purpose and the call for this, these visits and this interaction, which was clearly, I believe, understood by the teachers that we visited, but just for the public to know, it was not observation, it was not anything formal, it was just to create more connection and understanding for us to see what's going on in the schools so that we understand a little bit better, to just create a better relationship, more visibility. And my hope is that we'll head into the middle school and Pond Cove, if that's something comfortable. We don't want this to be anything that feels intimidating, because that's not the purpose in the least. And we had a really great experience in the high school, I think both Kimberly and I would say that unanimously, and, you know, based on, there's other board members who are interested, so it could be a variety of ways that this can unfold, but I would love to keep this going, I think it's a great practice, and I think it just leads to more connection and a stronger relationship and understanding from both sides, so. Yes, I would like to thank you again, Mr. Shedd. Anything else? We have some upcoming meetings. The next policy meeting is February 25th at 3 o'clock in the Jordan Conference Room. Our next school board meeting is February 25th at 6:30, busy day, in the high school library, and that is the budget workshop, which will be...
Just to put a reminder out that if people have, if any people have questions, please email those questions to me at least three days before, so I would say try to aim for the end of February vacation if you can, but if not, then the 22nd, so that I can sort of collate and compile and then send those questions out to the appropriate administrators and directors. Sorry to jump in.
No.
It was a good moment, though.
It was a good moment. And I'm going to jump on that and just let the public know that they're welcome to come. We were previously given the initial budget that had been presented from all the different administrators, and I think a bunch of us were sort of chomping at our bit, because we do have some questions and, but we were being respectful. And what?
There was your budget books.
And there's our budget book. We wanted to get through it and let them present, and present without interruption, and so this next meeting is the opportunity for us to come with some questions ahead of time and have those questions answered. And that, too, will be videotaped and online to access again. I'd also like, it's not on this, on the agenda materials, but a reminder that the building committee meeting is, it's a Wednesday, it has been on Tuesdays, it's Wednesday, March 4th at 6:30, we're in the high school library. And I'd like to say that if you are coming and you're not on the committee, it is a large committee, but if you're coming and on the committee, when we break up between groups, we include you. You're not sitting in the sidelines watching us all talk, but you get to be a part of it as well. So we encourage people to come and have their voices heard and participate in the discussion, especially if you have opinions about where the future of these buildings are headed. So anything else? Any other meetings that might have been forgotten?
No meetings, but I will, I don't know if this is probably a section missing where we can add to the agenda for next time. But it doesn't have to go to agenda, it's a question that, and a concern that I have, and I would like to have someone at the school district address it, and what they're doing in the school in reference to coronavirus, as far as how we educate the kids to wash their hands, having hygiene, are we announcing the assembly list? If something has, does happen, how do we quarantine that? And more importantly, because the way that is, the reality is that it's happening in China, so we as a result are being targeted, certain group of people as well, so we want to make sure that certain jokes are not shared and that. So I would like to know what's the school doing around that?
Okay. Thank you for that, Nasser. Anything else? Okay, at this time, may I have a movement for item 11?
I move that we enter into executive session pursuant to one MRSA 4056A to consider the administrative evaluation of the superintendent of schools.
Second. All those in favor? So at this time, we'll adjourn and come back. Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
I'd like to study.
Oh, you need to go study.[316.47]
I'd like to study.
Oh, you need to go study.